Is everybody ready? We'll go ahead and call the Tuesday, July 2nd, Commission meeting to order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That'll be followed by an invocation by Minister Jack White with the Gifford Church of Christ, followed by the pledge of allegiance by our Vice Chairman, Mr. Commissioner Joseph E. Flesher. If everybody will please rise.
Morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning with bowed heads and humble hearts. We thank you, dear Heavenly Father, for watching over us as we slept in slumber on last night. We come just now, dear Heavenly Father, in these chambers, and we ask that you continue to bless the members of this government. We ask, dear Heavenly Father, that you give them the wisdom and knowledge that they need to govern this county, that the decisions that they make would not hinder thy people or anyone within this county. We thank you, dear Heavenly Father, for life, health, and strength. But most of all, we thank you for your dear Son, Jesus Christ, who died on Capri's cross, that we might have a chance to inherit everlasting life. We come just now, dear Heavenly Father, asking you to watch and continue to bless our men and women who serve in the Armed Forces, continue to protect them from seen and unseen dangers at all times. We also ask a special prayer, dear Heavenly Father, for our first responders, our firefighters, our EMT, our law enforcement, and also, dear Heavenly Father, those who are in the Health Department. We ask that you continue to bless them, and not just them only, but also bless and protect their families. And as we unite this day in this part of the vineyard, dear Heavenly Father, we ask that we continue to love and be unified one with another, and we ask that we continue to love and forgive each other as you love and forgive us. And as we go from day to day, dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you not only bless us this day, but all the days to come. This prayer, we so humbly ask in Jesus' name, let us all together say, amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge allegiance to the greatest nation on earth, the United States of America, home of the free because of the brave. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, additions and deletions to the agenda. We do have one deletion requested by Staff 12J2, and I'd like to add Veterans Benefit Checkup Month for Operations Stop By in July under informational. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries. With that, we will move on to proclamations. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, what were the also pulled?
Of J2.
Was 8S pulled, Station 11 intertech?
Want to pull it for discussion or pull it off the agenda?
Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm pulling things off the agenda.
Apologize.
No worries, we all need more coffee this morning, I can totally understand that. I'm three cups down in my, my, my coffee. All right, with that, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. Our first is going to be a proclamation honoring Blake Allen Bartholomew on his...
I don't see him here yet.
Oh, he's not here yet, I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, he's not able to make it today, we just found out.
Okay.
So we're going to delay this until...
Do you want to do it at another time, we'll just hold on to this, or do you want to give this to him?
Yes, we'll hold on to it, hold on to it. The next scheduled meeting.
Doing it here and all.
Fantastic, that would be wonderful, we definitely want him to be able to be here.
We're good with that, yes, thank you.
That gives you guys extra time to work up a whole extravaganza to honor him in style, since he missed this one.
No pressure.
All right. With that, we'll move on to a proclamation declaring July 20th through 28th, 2024 is Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in Indian River County, Florida. This will be, this will be read by Commissioner Ehrman and presented to Mr. Beard, M.I.A.T., and I'm not even going to go into all that. Come on down with everybody, you'll have to tell me what all those letters mean after Commissioner Ehrman reads the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and welcome. It's my honor to read, I've participated in this a couple of times, you'd be surprised how much stuff is out there and left behind. But that will read the proclamation. The proclamation declaring July 20th through the 28th, 2024 is Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in Indian River County, Florida. Whereas the Marine Industries Associations of Treasure Coast Incorporated and the Florida Inland Navigation District, FIND, are deeply concerned with keeping Treasure Coast waterways clean for all to enjoy. And whereas the 17th Annual Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup will be held Saturday, July 27th, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And whereas, over 1,200 volunteers, as well as numerous waterfront homeowners associations, will participate in cleaning up our waterways. And whereas, since these efforts began, over 100 tons of trash have been collected from approximately 125 miles of waterways along the Treasure Coast, and the sustainability of our waterways is dependent upon efforts such as this, so future generations may appreciate and enjoy them. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board declares July 20th through the 28th, 2024, as Treasure Coast Waterway Cleanup Week in Indian River County, and encourages all citizens to participate in supporting the event, and commends the sponsors and volunteers whose contributions to this effort are critical to its success. Adopted this second day of July, 2024, and signed by all five county commissioners. Sir, we thank you for your efforts, like I said, I've participated in this many times, it is surprising how much stuff is out there in our waterways and left on the spoil islands that, that we try to clean up. I think it's better, I think there's more awareness to it now, but there's still a lot more we need to do to keep the, to keep the waterways and the spoil islands and everybody that boats and camps and all that stuff can enjoy it, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and other Commissioners for, for allowing us be here today and for reading the proclamation. You did a fantastic job, Commissioner Ehrman, and the acronym is Marine Industries Association of the Treasure Coast. It's a mouthful. But we're excited, we've been doing this now for 17 years, and we've, we've really engaged quite a few volunteers throughout the Treasure Coast, from Sebastian all the way down to Hope Sound, and it's moved on to a week-long effort. So we have the main cleanup is going to be on the 27th, but you can also participate virtually at a site of your choice if you can't be there on the 27th. So you can go to our website, it's treasurecoastwaterwaycleanup.com, and there's more information to, to register. We do have a few official sites here in Indian River County, so we've got the Sebastian Main Street Boat Ramp, the Wabashoe Causeway Boat Ramp, the Riverside Park Boat Ramp, Veer Beach Municipal Marina, and the Oslo Boat Ramp. So I'll be at Riverside Park on Saturday morning, 27th, so if anybody wants to come and join me, it'll be a good time. And again, thanks for, for having us here this morning, appreciate it.
Well, we definitely appreciate what you guys do in helping to keep our waterways clean. I know it's, can be a probably very frustrating job at times, but we, we appreciate all that you do in putting this together every year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Our next proclamation is recognizing July as Bebe Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. This will be presented by Commissioner Moss to the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc., the Lambda Beta Zeta chapter. Ladies, come on up, Commissioner Moss.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Proclamation recognizing July as Bebe Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc., an international community service organization founded on January 18th, 1920, on the campus of Howard University in Washington, D.C., promoting scholarship, service, and sisterhood. And whereas, in May 2023, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc., and Mental Health America, announced a partnership to broaden mental health resources by providing the Mental Health America National Screening and Prevention Program to Black, Indigenous, and People of Color communities. And whereas, mental illness is an essential part of overall health, affecting more than 50 million Americans, and it is vital that everyone has equal access to screening, treatment, and information, providing them choice over their care decisions. And whereas, a sense of belonging and inclusion is vital for the well-being and mental health of BIPOC individuals and community-led spaces such as cultural hubs are sources of belonging that promote overall mental health and wellness by providing areas where people of specific cultural backgrounds can come together to provide services and connect with one another. And whereas, connection with one's culture and community is key to supporting overall mental health, and individuals who have strong connections to their communities have better mental health outcomes, including lower rates of suicide, violence, and feelings of isolation. And whereas, National Minority Health Awareness Month was founded in 2008 in honor of Bebe Moore Campbell, a mental health advocate, with the goal of creating mental health awareness and eliminating stigma among diverse communities. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that July 2024 be recognized as Bebe Moore Campbell National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month in Indian River County, and call upon its citizens to increase awareness and understanding of BIPOC mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Adopted this second day of July, 2024, by the Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, and signed by all five Commissioners. So welcome to the sorority, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, we're very happy and thankful to be here. My name is Demetria Williams, I am the chapter president for Lambda Beta Zeta Chapter here in Veer Beach, Florida. I'm also the CEO and founder of Take Flight Counseling and Consulting LLC here in the county. I'm 100% virtual, and one of the things that I'm partnering to do here in the county along with the Mental Health Collaborative with West Sammons is to provide more awareness in this area, so we're very excited about this, and we appreciate the opportunity to have this day for Indian River County.
Yeah, well, it is such an important aspect of, of the community, to have a place where everyone can belong, feel that sense of belonging, I think we're all aware of that, each in our own way, since, since COVID, I think, that feeling of, you know, we've all experienced at a greater or lesser degree, sense of isolation, so this is so important, thank you for your efforts in this area.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
104 years.
Yes, 105 in January, very excited. Oh, and it's the 16th, it's the 16th of January, 1920. I think, I think the proclamation says the 19th was the 16th. Yeah, that's okay, yes, thank you.
You'll slide down this way.
There's a little, there used to be a tape in the middle, that's the middle.
Did he stand on at the tape?
Yeah, yeah, that's the official line. Yes, ma'am.
That's it. Everybody's all centered, look at that.
Thank you, ladies, thanks for everything you do. All right. In keeping with our theme, I'm going to take an informational item out of order, which is Veterans Benefit Checkup Month for Operations Stop By in July. Wesley, do you want, Cindy, do you want to come up and tell us what you guys have going on, because it sounds pretty cool?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. What, what we're doing is, there's, of course, you have your Veterans Service Office, but also, and, and they have their veterans come in and ask about numerous things that are available to them as far as education, and I'll let Cindy kind of elaborate on that. Go ahead and tell them a little bit about what that does.
Sure, our Veteran Service Office is our accredited VSOs, and what they do is help with spouse support, education, healthcare, and we do have a reduction in our wait time right now in our VSO office. We also have walk-in Wednesdays and Thursdays, and now, in collaboration with the Property Appraisers Office, for the month of July, we're doing a campaign called Stop By in July, where our accredited VSOs, our heroes, helping heroes, will be right here in the Vero office, supporting with walk-in support for our veterans.
And the goal behind this is, is there's numerous exemptions available through, that I'm able to give our veterans with the disabled, and for example, if their, their percentage of their, on their VA card, as far as the percentage of disabled, you know, if that goes up, then I can increase the, the amount of their exemption. Other things that people don't know about, I'm always talking to people about the members of the reserves that get called up into active duty. A lot of people don't know that every year, the state of Florida approves a certain theaters of conflict, that if you're deployed overseas and elevated by, in the reserves to these theaters of conflict, if you're there for 180 days, the following year, I get to knock your assessment in half. If you're there 365 days, I get to knock it down to zero. And it gets approved, it's everything from Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Jabuti, there's about, seems like about 25 or 30 different theaters of conflict around the world that any reservists that get called up into active duty, if they get deployed there, it's a benefit that they're entitled to, and I want to see to it that they get it, for them doing that for our country. We chose the month of July, obviously because of the Fourth, but we didn't want to celebrate just one day, we wanted to make it all month. And so, if anybody, if we have any veterans out there that want to know about any services that are available, we'll, we'll have that. Anybody that wants to know about the exemptions that are available, we encourage them to come in. We're going to do it at our Vero office this year, only mainly because of the space, but if anybody needs us, you, you stop by, tell them, Wesley sent them.
Awesome, now, real quick, what is the times and the dates?
It's every Friday.
Every Friday?
Every Friday in July.
All day?
Yep.
Every Friday for the whole month of July?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so if any veterans have any questions about any benefits, not just necessarily the property appraiser benefits, come on out on Friday, there'll be somebody there at the property appraisers office to help you live and in person, every Friday, the whole month of July.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
And we're, we're be doing some outreach, I've got some, some videos, we'll be trying to get on the public access channel, and doing some outreach to let the community know, so we certainly do appreciate this and adding it as an emergency item, I didn't realize this was the only one, the meeting that you had, so that's why the scramble.
No worries, and we appreciate you guys collaborating and, and helping us get our services to the people that need them as well.
And they've been wonderful, the Veteran Services, Cindy, the, the whole crew, we're excited about this, first time doing it.
Well, hopefully, this is the first of many to come.
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you guys, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I appreciate the, Madam Chair, I appreciate this coming out, but I want you to know, over the, throughout the years, that your office has been very open and ready and willing to help a veteran. I see Billy Orton here, he's, he's one of your players.
Absolutely.
I, I wind up having to deal with a, a lot of veterans that are unaware of the benefit that they can receive, and it's the VSO, the pamphlet, that when you see it and you just show it to them, they don't realize in, in 10 minutes, their taxable value can change drastically.
Absolutely.
And they've earned it, they deserve it, they just don't know how to ask for it.
Exactly.
Or put in for it, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Maybe you're going to be a little busier.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, that brings us to our approval of the minutes, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th and May 21st.
Madam Chair, move approval both.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries. And other informational items, our event calendar is attached, and we also have a letter of intent for another derelict vessel removal, so excited to get that out of the way, right in line with Waterway Cleanup Week, so perfect.
That's actually a grant from the U.S. Boat Foundation to do, it's a nationwide grant, they have a lot of money from the federal government to do it, because it's a problem
All over the place.
in Texas, and Louisiana, and everywhere, so...
I'm glad we're taking advantage of it.
Yep.
All right, that brings us to consent, we do need to pull 8S, is there any...
Need a Sierra.
8 Sierra, is there anybody else, any, I'm sorry, is there any other items, Commissioners?
Say S.
S.
There's Sierra.
I had that marked.
Commissioners, any other items that you'd wish to pull?
No.
All right, anybody from the public wish to pull an item from consent for discussion? No?
Madam Chair, move approval as amended.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we'll move on to 8S for discussion, yes?
Madam Chair, I, I see that we have a bid adjustment again, and this is a project that we're traveling since 2020, and 2022. It, it has been a painful project to observe, and I want you to know that, yes, I know that we have had some changes in the project, we've had some amendments in the project, but the project itself leaves somebody in the balance, the men and women who serve Indian River County as fire medics, and they, and the public should know that during the time, from the time the construction started till now, have been living in a portable trailer inside the property with most of the essentials, that again, they work 24-hour shifts, they live in the building, and most of the amenities have been altered, have been limited, and it was a lack of effort on the construction timing that caused a lot of concern and grief for the men and women who serve in Indian River County. I don't know how many of you visited, but I was a regular visitor of the location, and I did not see the master craftsmanship that should be put into our project. Again, this is not just a building, this is a place where our fire medics live for a period of time while they await that 911 call, and it is still not in good shape, and there has been some work that was done, and during one of my visits, I took a look at what was being done. I took a look at what was being done, and again, that's for the, our contract engineer to determine. I was very disappointed. There were many times where I visited where there was no workers. I understand that we have these adjustments, amendments, and sometimes there's a little delay, there's a permit, it has to be approved, there has to be materials, so we might have a down day. We had a lot of down days. And after looking at this, Madam Chair, I want to recommend that we flip the bond at this point. This has been way too long, it's arduous to look at. We have other projects, we have other fire station projects, and we can't, we can't settle for mediocrity and false promises in dealing with getting the job done. And I think the taxpayer, I think the taxpayer deserves that, and I believe that the fire medics deserve that, because after all, they're bunking up in a trailer. And I don't know if you've seen the conditions, they're, I think some of you may have, but they are, they are not exactly the best. And when you dial 911, you want people rested, ready, prepared, with the proper equipment, and you want them alert, and using all their skills and abilities and knowledge. And quite frankly, I think this is a test.
Yes, I've seen it, and I would agree. It's, it's one thing for a project to go on in the short term, but it's, it's been in this state for entirely too long. Commissioner Ehrman, you had a comment? Oh, and then Chief, I'm sorry.
Let me comment on this. Commissioner Fleischer, you beat me to it, it was under my matters to bring up too, and I appreciate you bringing it up, and I agree completely with what you said. As many of you know, of course, I was a fireman for 35 and a half years here, and I went through the days of when I was a lieutenant of Station Aid in Sebastian, of staying there while it was under construction. I went through the days of mold remediation in the stations and stuff like that, and those projects did not take as long as this project has taken. I agree completely with what Commissioner Fleischer said. I think that it's time that we flip the bond, I think it's time that we move on. This project started out, it was pretty much just a remodel, and it shouldn't have taken this long, but the conditions, they shouldn't have to endure this anymore. Again, I feel for them, I went through it, but not to the extent of this, and something that was just for a remodel. This has just happened, this has just been going on too long. It's time to make a change, and, you know, get somebody in there that can do the job, and whatever we need to do to get done. And I think, I'm not gonna add to what you said, I think Commissioner Fleischer said it all for the same reasons, but yes, I completely agree.
Chief?
Good morning, Commissioners. David Johnson, Emergency Services Director. I agree 100%. We've been very dissatisfied with this project since after the first three or four months. We've had our fire chief up there daily, I've been up there weekly, trying to prod these people to move forward, and it just doesn't get anywhere. They are blaming us for certain things which are not correct. They give us their payoffs very late, change orders take weeks or months to get taken care of. So it's been a very poor situation, especially for our crews up there who have done gallantly, sitting there in that dust while serving the public. So yes, I agree 100%. We have talked about pulling the bond with the county attorney. The only issue is, with doing that, it delays the project even longer through the various fights we would have to go through with pulling the bond. So I'm open to whatever you want me to do, and whatever's decided by the administrator and the county attorney.
How long, well, how long of a delay are we, I mean, how long of a delay are we talking about first and second? I mean, it's, it's been delayed so long, I...
Yes, and some of the delay is attributable to what was found out there on the site, that there were several starts and several stops along the way that really couldn't have been prevented or could have been foreseen. If we call the bond now, we would use the lack of having qualified personnel on the job, and the lack of progress made on the job. The bond company would come in with a new contractor and be required to finish the job. I would imagine that the bonding company would do that under a reservation of rights, allowing them to still dispute the alleged breach of contract by Intertec. Will it delay the process? The letters that have been going back and forth between the county and Intertec, back on June 12th, we sent a letter to Intertec urging their performance, asking them to provide us with milestones within five days. Eight days later, on June 20th, they responded with a letter, basically ignoring the lack of qualified personnel and lack of progress, and complaining about the starts and stops, and that they weren't in breach of the contract. As far as the past history, there is no supervisor on the project now, he was fired. They're going to have to re, I don't know, re-up the ante as far as their employees, getting a new person out there. I, I'm thinking that it would be a wash.
Basically, what I'm hearing is, any delay caused by us taking this route is probably gonna be dwarfed by the delay it's gonna take them to even figure out how they're gonna fix the disaster that they have created for themselves at Fire Station 11.
I think that's the long and short of it, yes.
All right. Anybody else have any comment? I mean, it seems pretty, I've been out there, it seems very clear to me, I have no problem with this. I don't even know how they would fix what they've done. I will say, though, I think part of this is exacerbated by the fact that this company is very far from the area. They're out of, what?
Coral Springs.
Coral Springs, Miami, and so they don't have anybody here that's monitoring that, nor do they, are they sending anybody up on a daily basis? So they're basically subcontracting out the work and not overseeing it, which is a, is a problem. And I know our purchasing process requires, you know, kind of lowest, best, and most responsive, lowest bidder scenarios, and there are state statutes that require us to go through certain processes there, but for me, this is an illustration of a problem when we don't have people that are local. And I don't know how we fix that, if there's a way to fix that in our purchasing process, because we have some capital projects coming up. And I don't want us just taking the lowest bidder and getting back into a scenario where, you know, they're, they're the lowest bidders coming out of Tampa. I mean, that's, nobody's gonna come over for three hours, to work for three hours, to go home for three hours, is the way that's gonna work, and expect projects to get done. So that's my first question. And then, secondly, I know we've talked about kind of a capital projects manager of some sort moving forward for some of these, which I think, in this instance, would have been helpful to have somebody from our staff coordinating more with this project to make sure it didn't get to this point. But what can we do from the purchase? Is there anything we can do, or think about doing in the future?
Absolutely. Good morning, Commissioner Jennifer Hyde, Purchasing Manager. We did have a local preference, probably about 15 years ago, in the county code, that was before my time. It was sunsetted because they thought it didn't really work out. There are definitely lots of different approaches that we can do, so I do plan to, after budget season, talk to the county administrator about some changes that we do want to make to the purchasing section of the code, and we can definitely bring a local preference in, as part of that, and enact that going forward.
I mean, I can see where it might be a double-edged sword to an extent, but I just, I think we need to have more control, other than just the lowest, most responsive bidder, to make sure they're qualified, and they have the staff to do the job that we're hiring them to do.
You brought up the local preference, and thank you for that. About 14 years ago, I initiated that, and another commissioner had observed that there was no participation in about six months. So I guess the anxiety level was enough to compel to take it off the books. It was a process where you could match the next, the other bid, the lowest bid, and if you can match the bid, and you're within 5%, you can take the bid. You had to perform at their rate, but you can have a local preference. Unfortunately, it was during a lower end of our economic time, and there was not much activity to be able to engage in that. We did not have many bids out in that six-month period. And I think we need to bring it back. And I think we will, we will be bringing it back.
I'm happy to pull something together and some options. I know it works in other areas. There are, there will be times that statute, like when we're, when we're using state funds, we wouldn't be able to utilize it, but for our, our local capital projects, we could definitely implement something.
I'd like to bring something back after the budget, when we get through that, and just discuss what options we might be able to. I'm sure that that ordinance and those processes are probably old and haven't been looked at for a while, but we might just freshen it up and see what other people are doing and having successes with. Yes, Commissioner Moss?
Is this something that the ombudsman could help with? You know, focus on this and, you know, drive it forward?
So actually, just to provide some context, and for the purposes of record, based on the board's comments, back in mid-April, after about a month or so going back and forth, we actually convened a meeting with staff, all those involved, as well as the Intertec Construction's representatives. They committed to providing us a detailed schedule, within three days, they didn't. It was, it was their commitment. And then the schedule they had provided, even the first benchmarks or identified days, they were, they didn't comply. So, but what I would add is, we already have established, from a, to assist in the permitting and our review process, we establish a single point of contact within the fire department to work with fire prevention, as well as establish a single point of contact for building and permitting. So there was no, well, I was trying to get in touch with this person, I was trying to get in touch with that person, I haven't got that. So we did that already. So I would just, I don't disagree with the county attorney in terms of the lack of performance. And we've gone back and forth in emails, letters, and it just doesn't seem, from our perspective, that they're making any progress, or is there any sense of urgency to resolve and ameliorate the conditions at the station? And we even put a Connex box out there for the purposes, because they committed back in April, oh, we have the materials, we have the materials, we have the materials. It's July 2nd, and that box is, how full is it? Empty.
Yeah, so, I mean, just to sum it up, they obviously don't care. We've tried to work with them, they're not performing, and it's time to move on so we can get it done.
I agree.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I feel that we, we have exhausted the discussion on this. I feel we have a consensus, so I...
He did.
Okay.
So can we just ask, Jennifer, is there any pay request for work that they've completed that's been signed off on, that we must approve?
We have, they just sent us four pay requests for March, April, May, and starting of June. We found errors in all of them, so we sent them back for correction, and we haven't received anything back yet.
And I didn't mention the workmanship either, but it was not...
That's okay, I did.
Exciting. Yes, you did. And, so the public knows, if you'll notice, we did not know that each other was there or visiting in any way, and haven't discussed this, but I'm glad that we had this discussion now. So I, I move to the direct attorney to go forward with the bond recall.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Ehrman.
So the motion would be to terminate the contract with Intertec and put the bonding company on notice that they are to comply with the terms of their payment and performance.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Well restated, Mr. Attorney. All right, we have a motion.
Well, he's got to.
I know, he's gotta keep us straight. We have a motion and a second. If there's any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, if I am in the right spot, we are moving on to public hearings, 10A1 fiscal year 2024 grant application for capital and operating assistance and bus replacement from the Federal Transit Administration. Let's talk buses. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Brian Freeman, MPO Staff Director, and also joining me here today is Chris Stevenson, the Director of Transportation at the Senior Resource Association. SRA operates the GOLINE and Community Coach. And I just have a update on the current state of the transit system. I promise I'll be brief, and then just also briefly just kind of look over the grant application that's before you. And this is a grant application where both county staff and SRA work together in putting together this grant application, and it's an example of the partnership that supports our local transit system, where we work with our funding partners at the state and federal level to fund the system. And on the screen before you is the current GOLINE route map. We have 14 GOLINE routes that currently operate six days a week. I think the levels of service coverage that we have here in Indian River County are beyond what you see in similar counties, you know, like small urban counties like Indian River. Around half of all county residents live within a quarter mile of a GOLINE route, and when you extend that out to three-quarters of a mile, that's 84% of the county's population is within three-quarters of a mile of a GOLINE route. And I think because of that, you know, the history of the GOLINE is one where we've seen steady growth in the system, really going back to the early 2000s. We had just one year where there was a drop in ridership from the previous year, and that was 2020. We all know what was going on in 2020. And since then, as the chart shows, ridership has recovered, and we had the highest ridership levels ever in the most recent fiscal year. Back in early May, with a grant of funding support from FDOT, we were able to add two additional hours of weekday evening service, and those were from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and we had over, almost 8,000 passengers ride in those additional two hours during the first 35 days of service. And as that red line shows on the chart, the trend is going up, where we're seeing usage increase. And we also saw an increase of ridership by about 40% from the existing 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM hours. I think most, you know, riders on the GOLINE system don't want to rely on what's the last run of the bus a day, so when the bus runs later, not only do we have people using those new hours, but we get even increased usage on those hours that precede it just before. I think with all the usage that we're seeing on the system, and the way that we've recovered from the pandemic, you know, it's not a surprise that, you know, compared to every other system in the state of Florida, we're easily the most efficient on a cost-per-passenger basis. We used to be neck and neck with Gainesville. They're now second place, because they haven't quite seen the recovery in their ridership. And right now, Gainesville's system is almost twice the cost per passenger for, you know, GOLINE. And I think that's really a testament also to the way SRA runs the system and how efficiently they run it. And it just shows the utilization of the system that's there. So just looking at the grant application today, we don't know yet what the final numbers will be, but what we've requested from FTA is a total of 7.2 million in funding, with 5.2 million going towards capital assistance. I'd love if we could get the whole 5.2 million, but I don't think we will. But the, I guess the budget that we put together for that includes vehicle replacement, continuation of our bus shelter program, you know, expanding the vehicle maintenance building, also other equipment, like computers, security equipment, and maintenance equipment. And I'll just note that for this part, there's no local match required, that we're able to use what are called toll revenue credits from FDOT as a soft match, and so we don't have to put up any local funds for the capital expenses for have to put up any local funds for the capital expenses for the system. And then on the operating side, we're requesting $2 million in funding assistance. And it's, there's no additional local funds that are required to, to, to get the 2 million, because we've already pledged local funds towards the state grants, and so we can use those combined state and local grants to draw down the federal funds. And so basically, there's a three-to-one ratio, that for every $1 of local funds that we put into operating the system, we're able to get a total of $3 back in state and federal funds. And so at this point, I would just recommend that you open up the public hearing and then adopt the resolution in support of the grant application.
Awesome, thank you. Commissioners, is there any questions of staff? Seeing none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lore with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further discussion?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I know that you and I and Commissioner Fleischer attended the FAC convention last week in Orlando, and I had two Commissioners from various counties on that list right there that asked me, how do y'all do it? We're almost $30 per person per ride, how do y'all do it? I go, you gotta come up and talk to Brian or MPO guy and Chris. I said, so I'm, I'm very thankful for that. It's, it's nice to receive those comments from fellow Commissioners that you see maybe once a year, that, that are noticing that, how efficient and good we do here in Indian River County, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Always doing a great job. All right, the next item is a public discussion item, a request to speak from Mr. Bill Rigby regarding our RFP policies. Mr. Rigby, welcome. Sorry we missed you at the last meeting. Glad you're feeling better.
I'm a little bit better. First of all, my name is Bill Rigby. I reside at 8465 Fifth Ninth Avenue, Oabesa, Florida. Before I begin to speak, I would like to say this, that I'm not here to step on the N-1, toes, anything like that. I'm only here this morning to speak on policies about the RFP. The RFP that was just awarded to Waste Management, my, here's, here's my understanding. If I'm wrong, please, you have a attorney, please correct me. First, first an RFP, it goes to the SWID, SWID and returns, take whatever they need, then it goes to purchasing from that, but purchasing and SWID, they work together. Once the RFP has been initiated and everything has been performed, then it goes then to purchasing. Purchasing then become the sole authority of that procurement. What, what I mean by that is that, I see that, and correct me if I'm wrong again, I see that when it's done, that SWID comes up and takes over what I say that, the control of that procurement process. But I mean, again, I'm saying that, in all my experience, that it's supposed to be purchasing become the sole authority of that procurement. DMS with the state is the sole procurement of procurement, when it comes to whatever. But I see that SWID comes and takes sole control of that. And I have a problem with that, because Ms. Heidi, Ms. Height, she is, she is supposed to be the sole authority of that procurement process. Meaning that, the evaluation, all of that is supposed to be done by her. Then from that, if SWID want to interject anything in it, he's, which is, who's the director or staff, then they come up and interject whatever they want to interject in it. But what I see here, because I've been doing this over 14, 15 years, upon my experience, it could be different here in Indian River County, I don't know. But I'm saying, in my experience dealing with contractual and dealing with procurement, that is the way that it was done for over, I know, 14, 15 years. But when I come here, it's totally different. Maybe Indian River County maybe have a different ordinance, they might have a different law of how I operate, I don't know. But if it is, someone can please educate me on that. I'm moving forward. I just want to bring that clear. Now, in the interlocal, in the interlocal arrangement to collect recyclable goods, I'm bringing two parts here, and it's going to be about RFP, recyclable goods, and the RFP to collect trash in Indian River County under Section 42, 42 USA, Section 1981983 is crucial. Every person who, under color, or any statute, ordinance, regulation, custom, or usage of any state or territory, the district or county, subjects or causes, causes to be subject, any citizen of the United States, or other person within the jurisdiction thereof to the deprivation of any rights, privileges, or immunities secured by the Constitution and laws, suit and equity or other property, proper proceedings for redress, except that in any action brought against a judicial office, when act or omission taking such officer's judicial capacity. And, and before I say this again, I want to say it again, I'm here in a orderly and uniform of application of only the law. The RFP, RFP negotiation was crucial, resulting in reduced price for Waste Management to win. If the county wanted a lower price, it should have went to an ITB. ITB is what they call an invitation to bid, if it was based on cost. But you, but remember now, you said that in that RFP, in the, in the initial bidding of the RFP, that FCC was across the board with the, with the most rating. And I looked at it again, in category one, there was 90-some points, category two, there was 90-some points. So it was that, the SWID director got up and said that, they negotiated on a cost. And when, when negotiating on a cost, to me, you're splitting two things. You're using a RFP, and now you're going to IBT for costs. And I just heard you say, I just heard you say now, that sometimes the low response of bid is not always best, and sometimes it's not.
Mr. Rigby?
Yes.
I'm not sure what point you're trying to get at, but it seems like there's some confusion as to the process that we went through. So we did a best and final offer process, which was well put out to all the bidders and applicants that submitted, from the very beginning of the process. That is a process that's been used in other places. It was well within our abilities to do so, so I'm not exactly sure where, are, did, are you, do you have questions about that process?
Yes, I do.
Or, okay, can we get to those?
Yes, I'm going, well, I'm going to get that in a few minutes, okay? When you, when you asked me, is that, I have, of course, I have, I have a question about the process, because if FCC was across the board, evaluated the highest, then you dropped them down to the next option, which was, you put them against Waste Management. My question is, how, how can I be, one, I'm how, all the way across the board, you dropped me to a lower bracket, and then you asked me to drop my price?
If that's not something that the bidder wanted to partake in, then they should not have availed themselves of the process we were putting out there.
Repeat that again, please.
If that, if, if you were, if you were a bidder and you were unwilling to provide a lower price, FCC did not bring their price down significantly, they stayed with the first price. That is their right to do, under the process that we did. Waste Management chose to do something else, and we've had a large discussion about this at our last meeting and the meeting before that, so you might want to go back and watch those meetings. There was a lot of information on this issue provided at that point.
I didn't, I didn't watch the meeting, but I did go back and read the RFP. I read the, the RFP extensively, and reading the RFP extensively, and in my experience at doing procurement, I'm saying again, I understand what you're saying you did or you have done. What I'm saying is that what you have done according to the law is not done properly. That's all I'm saying here. And, and, and when you do something properly and with the guidelines of the law, then there's, there's no, no one has no discussion of what is, I, I, I wouldn't even be standing up here, because, because you did it right. That's what I'm saying. And if you let me finish my speech, I will...
You are welcome to, but...
I'll be glad to.
Okay.
Excuse me. I'm going to move on, I'm trying to be brief as I can. We must uphold the principle of transparency and fairness in our procurement process. This RFP, which has raised concerns, should be considered to ensure that all applicable laws and Florida, or, and Florida procurement statutes are adhered to as overseen by your person to manage. Foremost, as we need to establish, establish a clear policy framework. Our procurement policy specific participation goals for minority-owned, service-enabled, veteran-owned business can guide us to a more diverse and inclusive recycling service landscape in Indian River County, providing reassurance and confidence in the proposed changes. It is also essential to address the recent statement made by the person manager, whom indicated that the county does not follow inclusion of minority business, is still dealing with the RFP, minority business of self-disabled veterans and own business in the procurement environment, as mandated by Florida Stat. The lack of transparency is legally problematic and contravening to the principles of equity and inclusion that the county service do uphold. Additionally, I have reviewed the Indian River County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 204, Solid Waste Disposal, and found no provision that exempts the county from complying with these statutes as such. I request that the person manager provide a written statement confirming this policy for my records, especially given that the county is, is positioned, the person department to complete for the National Procurement Institution Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. Given the current situation, we must question whether the county can genuinely compete for the National Procurement Institution Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award, while willfully ignoring segments of the Florida statute related to minority business.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Rigby, for your comments. We appreciate them.
I'll be back again.
All right.
You're not going to shut me up. I'll be back next, next Wednesday afternoon to finish this stuff.
All right, fantastic. We look forward to that. With that, we'll move on to county administrative matters. Next item is strategic plan, proposed county mission statement and core values.
Good morning, members, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm going to come before you, provide you the updated where we are, as well as kind of present to you the proposed mission statement and core values. Next slide, next slide, sorry. Do I have, oh, I do, okay. Here we go. So just to rehash or kind of review where we started, if you recall, we started in interviews back in August, no, October of last year, and then there was a survey sent out to all of our employees in November, and then in December, we had a strategic planning workshop with our consultants, and then we received the report. It was accepted by the Board in, in February, and then later in April, we presented the goals to the Board based on the themes and the results from the surveys, and, and you adopted those. The next, we had, literally a week later, we had a staff workshop, if you will, and there was more than 55, 60 people that attended that workshop and, with our consultants. And then our goal teams have been meeting, and now we're here to present to you the process, where we are. So this is the overall strategic planning process. I know you've seen this before, it's a busy chart, but it kind of walks you through just from a system standpoint. Right today, we're going to be talking about mission and values, and then after, well, we already started this, by identifying strategic issues based on those goals, and then the goal teams will be evaluating, you know, what are the strategic issues, what are the responses to those issues, and developing and formulating strategies, action plans, and objectives for those. So don't go over it too much. So as you know, environment, governance, infrastructure, public safety, and quality of life are, are five goals in which the goal teams will be working for the purposes of identifying the strategic issues and the objectives. And so we've got the goals adopted. We're here today to present to you the mission and values, and that will help guide, I think, I believe, in a significant way, the goal teams as they develop those smart or specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, you know, objectives for the county strategic plan. So the mission, the various themes that we, that came back from the, the survey, and the, from, based on, that was largely predicated upon the interviews, is your service, serve, delivering service, community service, equitable governance, quality of life, natural resource, protect the environment, future what residents cherish about community, the community. So we try to distill that down into a, a simple statement, you know, mission statement. Again, our mission statement is our purpose, the reason for which we exist. So with that, after several iterations and conversations, we have proposed, we are proposing the mission statements that the residents would understand and our, our employees would understand, what we stand for, who we are, and, you know, what's our why, what's our purpose. And we are dedicated to Indian River County through service excellence. So that would be the mission statement that we are proposing to you. We could stop here if you want to have comments on this, before we move to values, if you would like.
Commissioners, any comments?
So then...
I'll open it up for public comment after he finishes his presentation.
So then, we looked at the values based on the, the themes that were extracted from the survey results and the interviews, and you see the various values, professionalism, competency, customer service, transparency, honesty, integrity, respect, accountability, pride, confident, trust, dedication, collaboration. So with that, you know, the committee, the strategic plan and the court committee came together, we had put together, we brainstormed virtually, and also the most recent meeting was in person, and we just kind of knocked it out after several proposals were, were developed. And so we come up with integrity, and essentially, the Indian River County is going to conduct itself in the highest ethical manner in all that we do, with a commitment to respect, accountability, and transparency, responsiveness. Indian River County is going to provide excellent customer service by being accessible, approachable, receptive, helpful, and innovative, and collaboration. Indian River County will work together cooperatively, united in our purpose to serve the community. Our core values are, if you will, they are organizational moral compass. Those are the values and, and the standards by which you and the public can expect administration and us as an organization to act and conduct and carry out the affairs of the public business. So with that, I'd just like to take an opportunity to recognize our goal champions that have been identified for each of the teams. I would also thank Kathy Copeland, who's been, been serving in multiple roles, but also assisting, coordinating with our strategic planning consultants, and myself, and others, and the, the goal teams, as our project coordinator, Mike Zito, Nancy Bun, Beth Powell, Environment Goal Co-Champion, Kylie Yenchula, Kristin Daniels, Susan Boyle, Governance, Sean Liski, Infrastructure with Kristin Leindecker, Dave Johnson, our Emergency Services Director for Public Safety, Cindy Emerson, Quality of Life, and our Ombudsman jumped right in, specifically this last meeting, as we were trying to really kind of land the values and our mission statement. I will mention, you'll see the asterisk, those are our core strategic planning team members, but we have more than 55 team staff members that attended the strategic planning kickoff workshop, to include members from IAFF, the Teamsters, and, and then others who are, they were the supervisor, coordinator, managers, traffic engineer, directors, we didn't limit it, we wanted to get as many as possible together for the purposes of reviewing the process going over, and soliciting and enlisting their support and, and their participation. With that, in terms of... With that, in terms of next steps, our strategic plan goal teams are meeting to identify and develop those objectives and the strategies and tactics. We anticipate in August, a preliminary draft being provided to the board. It'll probably be, we're thinking like the third week of August, not the 20th. We would wanna understand that meeting with this being the last meeting prior to the 20th, so it'll probably be a special call meeting after that standpoint. But the goal is to bring a, have a public workshop in September, and then bring the final draft strategic plan back to the board for the board and public comments on September 17th. Then we would take a little bit of time, formulate, document, you know, and put together the final strategic plan to present to the board for adoption on October 8th. And then after that, the most, you know, that's critically important, but then continuing to drive this down into the organization, meeting with our, you know, our leadership team, meeting with our staff, so we can drive and change the culture. And then there's a full, firm understanding of the direction in which the county is going and the goals, the objectives, and the strategies that we'll be undertaking. So, and the other thing I would add is, as we have adopted the goals, the board, you'll find in the upcoming budget message, staff, you know, included a component this year, an extra step to where everybody had to identify what goal for all the new requests for anything over $5,000. What goal is that related to? And then we also looked at the priorities for those, so we could have our basis to determine what we should be presenting. So with that, the recommendation is to adopt the presented mission statement and core values as part of the county's 2024-2027 strategic plan. I'll thank you and open up for comments and questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
You wanna leave that for a minute?
Yes, Commissioner.
Excellent job. I think it's long overdue, no matter what service we're providing to our residents. Customer service, good customer service is always paramount. So thank you for your effort. And I'm glad to see that it's going to be cohesive and coordinated and will filter down to every single employee that the emphasis will be on customer service, that that will become the culture. Like I said, it's long overdue. Thank you.
All right. Anybody from the public? Come on up and please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Tom Sullivan, 4187 West 16th Square. If we, John, if you could go back to the mission, to the mission statement? I was familiar with MBO back in the 80s and 90s. I think a lot of your stuff is very similar. Now, is there any way I can put this so it can be up there? Obviously, I don't have as much secretarial service anymore.
Cam's got you.
I would like the mission statement to be a little more aspirational. I think that when people work in an organization, they look up to that statement. I think if you have this statement, people are gonna say, "I'm dedicated to excellence." What does that mean? Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll be able to have both of them up at the same time, though.
Oh, okay. You can take those down. I'm sorry. That doesn't sound aspirational enough for me. And what I think we want the people of the community is to feel that as they work here, they're working for everyone within the community. As you can see, I really, my handwriting has to get better. "To ensure that the citizens of Indian River County continue to enjoy and benefit from the beauty of our county and the abundant natural resources by providing exemplary government services." Now, I feel, Joe, this fits in with a lot of things you used to say. I remember when you came here one time and we were having that water thing out there and you wanted to turn it into a park, and then we found that the government said you couldn't put it next to the resource water. You know, I remember Joe saying things. Alls I'm saying is, I like people that work for an organization to have aspirational goals. I don't think it's, I mean, maybe in police work, that first statement would be much more applicable. But I think as we move along at the government, we want people that work here to say, "Hey, this is what I want." You know, "I work for the county. I want to maintain the beauty, the natural resources, and I'm a government employee that helps to do that." Obviously, through legislative ideas like you have. You know, so that was my only thing. I don't, I, since he's been here, I've agreed with everything he's done. I've talked to several council members about that. I think the idea of the MBO being put in place is interesting, goals and objectives going down the line. But I think when you come to the top statement about, what is your mission statement? Now, I have to tell you, I've worked at four major universities. These things are dealt with like for months on end, just like he did, okay? But I've never come up with a task to be the mission statement. The exemplary government, I think, should fall more under a task. In other words, how are we gonna do this? We're gonna be very efficient. But to say that I wanna work for this organization, I work for the county of Indian River and I'm totally efficient. We could apply that to a lot of different things, okay? But I want people to work for the county, and I did hear a statement, "We're gonna bring the culture from the top down." I've been a basketball coach for 35 years, okay? And I can tell you, instilling a culture is difficult, as you would know, okay? As you would know in the fire department. But you can, okay, instill a culture if you get the people at the bottom to feel that they're really part of this system. Sometimes by forcing the culture downward, it does not have the exact effect, you know? And I've witnessed here, you know, some of the things which I, you know, tend to agree or disagree with. That's a funny statement, I guess. When you talk about people being taken off at wills or being put on at wills, that can create a certain amount of angst. How that angst is later, you know, brought about or how it's sent through the system is very curious, okay? I know that lately, I've been trying to get in touch with people, and the last thing I would say is that we're efficient, okay? And I hope in the future, that will be the first thing we'll say. But again, I just wanted to bring this up. I wanted this for your consideration. One of the things my wife said was maybe they should have a contest with the children, okay, in schools to come up what they think the mission statement of Indian River Government should be. And this would involve them, you know? And again, we all know, as you do, that the mission statement is critically important to when people say, "This is what I believe in." I just think, you know, in my career, if I were to tell kids, you know, "We're gonna be the highest-scoring team." They would say, "Well, how do we?" You know, they wanna be part of a group that is going to display values, that's going to be good citizens, you know? And that's the way I look at it. And I just bring this to your attention. Unfortunately or fortunately, okay, I read all this stuff.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your comments. The only thing I would add to that is that this mission statement was something that was collaborated on across multiple departments by multiple staff members. So it wasn't directed from us or from administration. They all worked together because they all, each department and each person does a different role within the county to try to find kind of an umbrella mission that they could all get behind. And then to your point, the goals and objectives and vision of how we accomplish that will be drilled down under each department as we move forward. And I think that's where that statement might fit some of those departments specifically as far as goals to how to accomplish that, but it might not, because the county does so many different things, fit all of the departments as an overall uniform mission statement. Yes?
So I just, I'm not disagreeing about the necessity of really evaluating the mission statement and/or, but I think the comment would be, you know, when you look at aspiring, you look at your end state, what's the vision? And the vision usually comes at the end of the process, where you determine what your end state is. Where do you wanna be in five, 10 years from now? So whereas your mission statement, generally speaking, is your purpose, you raise and the top, the reason for which you exist as an organization. For us, we're saying it's to provide that service excellence, being dedicated to that. That covers internal and external customer service. And then to support that, we're putting in core values that, and our goals that specifically highlight the various items that, about what you're speaking. And then to the commission, to the chair's point, more than 480 employees were invited, and they, actually about all of our employees had emailed, and more than 480 of them actually participated in an online survey in terms of what was important as we looked at. And there was interviews that existed beforehand. It was an interview process, then the survey, to distill and synthesize and come down to the themes that were most important. And then we had more than 55 employees. And I think one of the things for me, in my experience, and I've been doing it probably about 25 years, I've taught strategic planning at the graduate level, is I believe the mission statement needs to be short, succinct, and memorable. So, 'cause that drives that employees or that organization, because then they know, "What's my job? Oh, to deliver superior service. Oh, to provide service excellence. That's my, that's my why. That's the purpose. That's the reason why I exist for this organization."
And I hear what you're saying. I believe that the mission statement should be aspirational. And so, you know, and we're not gonna come to, you know, that's yours and that's mine, and that's fine.
All right. We definitely appreciate the input. Thank you so much. All right. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Ehrman.
Sullivan, I don't disagree with you. The mission statements should be inspirational, aspirational, but also agree with our county administrator, it should be succinct, and it should be something that everybody's, it's easy to remember and for things to do. Police departments and fire departments always have a mission statement. Some of it are very well-known by the general public, 'cause you see it on the side of the police cars in LA. City PD, protect and serve. You got, I don't remember what, what was New York, sir? You remember?
Courtesy and professionalism.
Professionalism and responsiveness. Fire departments, our family, serving your family, they've all been very short and succinct and to the point, because you have to make your employees have to be able to remember that and be able to repeat it. It's not like it's something you repeat every day, like the pledge of allegiance that we were brought up through school. But it's something that needs to be short, succinct, and to the point, and something that's attainable. And I think that's attainable. I don't disagree. I like more inspirational, but it's, when you make it inspirational, you make it longer and all that sort of stuff. So I thank you for your comments, but I gotta side with our administrator on this one, because, just 'cause what I'm used to. You know, our family, serving your family, protect and serve, all that sort of stuff.
Well, the wonderful thing about any strategic planning process is it takes a lot of input to get a good result at the end. And we appreciate all of the public and the staff participating in this, because it is about what the county as a whole's direction is gonna be. So, all right. Commissioners, other questions, comments, or concerns? Anybody else from the public?
Madam Chair, I'd just say that, you know, through the years, the, these philosophies have been shortened, been lengthened. Sometimes they get too long that employees and others, public can't understand them. So as it is in 2024, they're much more shortened. Public safety has always been somewhat short, but we've all been on committees where we're looking at the strategic plan, but most importantly, the core values are incorporated in that. And that is what the administrator got here. This was his mission, to change the culture of this agency, which he is well on his way. I do believe that. And we're going in the right direction. With that, I motion to approve.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lore, and I'm gonna take the second on that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I know Cindy, you gotta put up the presentation stuff. We're just gonna take a brief five-minute break. just going to take a brief five-minute break. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Our next item is departmental matters, community services, children's services advisory committee, recommended program funding allocations for fiscal year 2425. Ladies, welcome.
Thank you so much. My name is Cindy Emerson. I'm the community service director, and I'm joined here with my team with human services. We're really excited to show you some of the progress that we've made over just the last 11 months in collaboration with volunteers throughout our community that were both appointed, and then also members who were put on the subcommittee through the appointed members that you guys had put on. So, I just want to go through our funding recommendations for this year, and start first with the responsibilities and roles of CSAC. One of the things that I heard last year prior to being hired into this position is that we needed more visibility, more structure, and more systems in place. And over the last 11 months, we've worked tirelessly with our volunteers on children's services. And I cannot tell you enough how much work that they have put into streamlining and putting our ordinance into practice. There are very specific roles that each of us hold within children's services based on ordinance and the guidebook. And so, first, the role of the needs assessment committee, they really are the ones that drive the progress that we're making with children's services by looking at the needs, the gaps within our community and current programs, and addressing that through analyzing data and looking at research. The grant subcommittee, they do the grant evaluations. One thing we'll talk about today is what we've done through the RFP process and the scoring rubric to really structure that a little bit stronger. They also make our funding recommendations to the children's services advisory committee. And they do performance monitoring, which we have made, we've coined the obnoxious transparency through children's services, making sure that we have everything located on our website as far as our quarterly reports, progress monitoring that's happening within our agencies, and the outcome measures that we're receiving as a result of that with our return on investment. The CSAC committee, they work through the needs assessment planning process and oversee the needs assessment. They also work with the program recommendations and funding allocations. We just finalized that process, and that is why we're here today with the final funding recommendation. And they monitor and evaluate, and then we also do inter-agency coordination through our children's services advisory council. They also make sure our policy and procedures are maintained. The board of county commissioners, what your role in all of this is to be the policy approval, program approval, financial oversight, and making the appointments onto our children's services advisory committee. Our staff responsibility, and we have really amped this up this year with having additional staff in place. We provide the support services. We make sure that the monitoring and reporting is both visible and maintained. We do our grant management. We also are available to write grants to seek additional funds outside of the board of county commissioners' funding, which we hope to begin that process this year now that we have stable staffing and have increased our staffing. We also do the financial management. We do all the reimbursements and audits. We do the documenting and reporting and coordination and communication. What we've added on this year is professional development support, and we have taken the guidebook from 1997 and have reissued it and made sure that is in compliance with our B O C C policy and ordinance. The needs assessment subcommittee met and went through the collection of data using a SWOT analysis and the patch framework, and finalized recommendations this year. The members on the needs assessment subcommittee are considered some of the experts out in the community, including Dr. McMahon, who sits as the accountability and research director for the school district. We have the executive director of the substance abuse council, as well as licensed mental health counselors, members of Healthy Start, et cetera. Lots of real expertise there to help us dive into that data and disaggregate it. And from that, we came up with the three funding priorities that the funding recommendations this year are aligned with, which are the health and well-being of our community, nurturing families and communities, and success in school and life. We're really proud of this, because it really emphasizes prevention, looking at identification and intervention as being the pivotal foundation for all of this, really also building up parent and guardian capacity in children's services. So, these are the focus areas with health and well-being, with nurturing families and communities, and with success in school and life. And from that framework, the grant subcommittee looked through close to 60 different programs. And in this process for the funding recommendation in February, our staff offered professional development, coaching. The application opened. In March, the professional development continued with research-based program design and evaluation. I would say we're looking at progress, not perfection yet. This is definitely going to be a slow and steady process to ensure that we're getting the strongest research-based measurable outcomes with each of our programs. And what we're hoping is at the end of the next grant cycle, we're able to show the board of county commissioners and our taxpayers the real return on investment for those three funding priority areas. In June, the grant subcommittee met over four full days. Prior to that, they went in and scored over 60 applications. These volunteers worked tirelessly. I couldn't be more proud of the work that they did in advance of these meetings to make sure that they had their questions ready. Our agencies responded to their questions by giving, you know, really clear and accurate representation of what the return on investment would be for our community. And then in July, we're bringing now those funding recommendations to you after taking it to the children's services advisory committee and getting it approved. There are a lot of benefits to the RFP process and the scoring rubric that we initiated this year, including increased accountability, making sure outcomes are research-based, addressing identified needs, and then ensuring there's organizational capacity with each of the agencies behind our programs. We wanted to make sure that our community is aware of all of this, so this entire presentation is public, as well as the funding recommendations for the committee and has been on our website. We invite you, please participate in the process. And if you're interested in being a part of this volunteer movement with children's services, we do have vacancies that are going to be open that we're going to be looking to fill in October, November for our grant subcommittee. The funding recommendations have been broken down into each priority area, so you'll be able to see for health and well-being, for nurturing families and communities, and for success in school and life, exactly what programs align to each. And the return on investment will be over 17,889 anticipated children served. That doesn't include our families that get the benefit of these programs, along with our community, and the long-term return on investment back to our taxpayers. What we say is, we're creating the future law-abiding taxpayers of tomorrow. And so, with that, we know that the return really is incredibly valuable. Research shows that for every dollar spent, there's a $10 return on investment. So, we just want to thank you for the amount that you've been able to fund for children's services this year, and also acknowledge that we're saving about $30 million for a community of the future by having these programs in place. In July, we're going to have some professional coaching and support by our new human services manager, Ms. Megan Kendrick. She's going to be working with our CSAC grant recipients, giving them program implementation support, reviewing their outcome measures, and refining them where we can make some really strong evidence-based implications, and then planning to collect, monitor, and analyze that data for the agencies that were not included in funding. Megan will also be working with them, giving them some feedback, reviewing the grant application, and giving them some potential future outcome research-based models that they can look at and use for the next grant cycle. This is always going to be our intent, that we're trying to create the strongest return on investment with the programs. And the best way to do that is by building sustainability within our programs and our agencies, and helping drive them to reach their goals. We also have community forums. This is new to children's services around each of the different funding priorities. We will be bringing experts in. We will be inviting the community to participate at the IG Center as we go into what research is available, what programs currently exist in our community to support these funding priorities, and what our next steps are to really create a robust return for our taxpayers. And with that, I know you have received the funding recommendation, and staff fully stands by the recommendation of the children's services advisory committee.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to expand upon that and tell you about my experience this year, being that you appointed me when you became chairman to head of the children's services advisory committee as the commission's liaison to that board. I know everyone on this board has had experience with it. Commissioner Lore, even when he was sheriff, had experience with it, and Commissioner Moss previously did this, and I know we've all done it. And I remember when I became a commissioner in 2020, that it was run by just LeAnn. She was the one-man band doing this thing, and she kept, she kept it together with Band-Aids and glue and everything else, and kept it moving forward. And I thank you for that. So, I didn't know what I was getting myself into with this, but I can tell you what I saw, what I witnessed, what I was a part of was absolutely outstanding. I say that because there was transparency, there was openness, there was organization, there was time to take and explain to the members of the main committee and of the, of the, all the committees underneath them, what their job, what their purpose was, what they were, what they were sworn to do, what they were, what they have to do, whether it's popular or not. But it was their mission, and, and these ladies let it, let it through them, and did it very with, with, with so much grace and much poise. I would tell you that there was at times, it may have got a little bit questionable, or not, I would say not to the point of contentious, but some people asked some questions, and, and their answers were, were very professionally and politely, politely responded to. And most of the time, after anything was said, the person that asked the question got the answer that they were looking for. And I thank them, them for that, all of them. The process was, was tough. I know that none of us would want to be one of the people looking for funding to go before the board. That was a tough group, led by Bob Slitt, who did an outstanding job as the chairman. It was, it was a tough group. I said, I wouldn't have wanted to give a presentation to them. But I say that with the fact that they were very professional to the people asking for funding. They even gave them suggestions and ideas on how to improve. And not everybody got funded. If you'll see on your list, there was a total of 3.4 million requested with 56 proposals, and they stayed within the budget. They are actually less than the budget. They didn't spend $128,000. So, I would commend them for that. I wish we could do that with a lot of things around here that we could stay under budget and, and have the outcome that they had. But I'm going to tell you that this process has gone from leaps and bounds of when I was the first commissioner, because I did question where we were going, what the transparency was, how we were doing it, were we doing the right things, were we funding the organizations that we needed to fund and, and fund those organizations in a proper fashion. And I think they've answered, they've answered all that questions. Is it, is it perfect yet? Will it ever be? I don't know if that'll ever be, but it's darn sure better than it was. And I think you all could agree that you learned a lot this year to even make it a better process in the years to come. So, I want to thank Cindy, Megan, LeAnn, Ms. Maya, for all the work that they've done with regards to this. And I think it was just a really good process for everybody that was involved in it, not only our staff, but for the, the groups that, that got funded and the groups that didn't get funded. I think they learned a lot, too, and, and we'll see where this goes in the future. I think there will always be some questions from some of the naysayers of why we're funding, what we're funding, but I can tell you that the papers that I read, the few, the meetings I was able to sit through, through the grants, and through the main committee, which I was a part of, I think most of those questions were answered. And so, I want to tell you that you can be proud of your staff for what they did. They did a great job, and I would be in favor of approving this and move forward.
Is that?
That's a motion.
That's a motion. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman and a second by Commissioner Moss. Commissioners, other questions, comments, or concerns?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that the RFP scoring, I reviewed all of that. I think that's refreshing, not only for the commissioners to be understood about that, but throughout this whole process, so the public knows, the commissioners were kept in, in the loop by email, step by step by step, which I don't believe happened last year. And that's also refreshing to know what direction you're going and having offline conversations with Cindy and others about how the process, hearing some of the aches and pains along the way, which is, you're always going to have that. So, it's a great process, and obviously I'm in favor of it as well.
Wonderful. All right. Anybody from the public? Seeing, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm prideful, and it's a pleasure at the same time to be able to be here and tell you I was very much part of this process this year. I want to start, too, by thanking all of the staff who played a vital role in this, clearly from the human services and community services, up to Mike Zito, and the county attorney was involved at one or, or more instances for rulings. You've got a lot to be proud of in terms of who's here, and even if some of the faces aren't necessarily the same faces we started with, everybody played a role in making this a really important and impactful process, which is what was intended. You approved a new ordinance with structure. They're putting meat on the bone and have done an amazing job in the first year, and I know that it will only get better. I'm sort of in a unique position. I think I was the only person that served on both subcommittees. Was not my intent to do that. I wanted to be on the grants committee, which is something I'd never done, but I'd been on needs assessment for, I don't know, 15 years. So, I kind of backed away, but the chairman of that committee insisted that I not leave. So, I was on both of the subcommittees, and I know how hard both groups worked. Good groups of Good groups of people in every instance who took their jobs very seriously. And I think special thanks needs to go to two of the CSAC committee members who chair those. I think Hope Woodhouse did an amazing job with a group trying to define the data to help guide the process, and I know that Bob Schlitt just as well did an amazing job with the Grant Subcommittee. The amount of time that goes into this is not, it's not a small number of hours that each and every one of these people put in. I know what I do. These guys had to make it all make sense in between each meeting that we had. The bottom line is, huge kudos to the staff. I, you know, I've got a vested interest in this. You all know that. It's been a long process. I've been working with CSAC, trying to improve the process and get more dollars and everything that it means in terms of helping the kids in the community, and I think that there's much to be proud of here. And lastly, just before I left the house, opened up TC Palm, and I saw that the FAS scores are out. I'm not in the school district. I'm not, I don't even know all the ins and outs, but I see that Indian River County's scores were the best of the Treasure Coast and that it improved 3%. And I reference this because CSAC's part of that, just maybe a small part, but we're part of that. We helped, we're helping a great many of those kids to stay, and FAST, if you don't know it, and somebody help me here if I say this wrong, there's like four areas that they test now. It's the new school, it's not just reading, it's language arts, it's math, it's science, social studies. And 63% of third graders are at or above grade level. Take pride in that. This is part of where these CSAC dollars have been going. So again, I want to thank you for starting the change, the revolution, or evolution of what CSAC was into what it is, and I know it's only going to get better. So I thank you very much. Appreciate the support that you're giving. And if I was dreaming and missed an actual vote, thank you, and if not, I certainly want you all to approve the funding that's in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. All right. Anybody else from the public?
I'm Donna Haller from Pelican Island, Audubon. I'm the executive director there. And first, I just want to say thank you all for allowing us to serve the children of Indian River County. We're in our 10th year of our after-school program, science program outdoors, and LeAnn, I worked with her from the very beginning, and she's always been very supportive. I think she needs a special award personally, but also due to the excellent training and support that they've provided this last year, I think it's really pushed us to focus even more on our numbers, on where we're moving with our children, kind of keeping track. And we certainly have several children, because it's been 10 years. We have children in college that are environmental educators now. We have several of our students that come back and serve our camps all summer long. And the other challenge was getting further family engagement, not just involvement, but actual engagement, and that has increased by 50% this past year, and it's almost to the point that we're past capacity that we're able to provide that. We provide kayaking for families to come on the weekend that are in the program, and we've had to double up all of our Saturdays to provide for every one of the families that were wanting to come. So that has been like just an added bonus on the end. I also just want to, I really think it's a really vital service that we all provide. All of the agencies together work hard to serve all these children in all areas, and I do think it helps their overall wellness and growth and education. And we work with over 15 partners and collaborators within the community that I know of. We may have more than that, and it just really shows that everybody has skin in the game. And, you know, I'm really proud of that. So thank you very much, and I'm glad to hear that you agree with us. Thank you.
All right, commissioners. There is a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Moss. Mr. DeSmoof, welcome.
Dr. DeMuth, 1804 East Sandpoint, CSAC main committee member and your financial chair on that committee. First of all, I'd like to correct something that Commissioner Ehrman said, that the budget was underspent by $128,000. Not completely true, because what took place was the STEP program for $168,000, more or less, was pulled from it due to some paperwork issues and challenges associated with the funding between CSAC and the school district. So without that, the entire amount would have been spent. In fact, there is an issue being investigated into how that STEP program can be funded and the very strong potential that that $128,000 could be coming back to you and being asked for to being spent on that STEP program and possibly a bit more. So that corrected. Second issue I'd like to bring up with in the process that took place this year was the substantial number of conflicts of interest that came up. On the Grants Committee meeting, or on the Grants Subcommittee, nine of the 14 members had conflicts of interest. Four of those nine had multiple conflicts of interest and refused to question the organizations with which they had conflicts of interest. However, according to our attorney, Mr. DeBraal, voting for those organizations was not a problem. Voting to fund those organizations didn't matter. So that...
No, that's not correct.
Well, that's the information that you provided, and that's how those, that's how those folks...
No, sir. I'll correct you right here.
Please.
That they were able to vote for the final allotment as a group, but not as the individual.
Exactly. So if you combine, if you take one conflict of interest and you combine it with another organization that does not have a conflict of interest, evidently that's no longer a conflict of interest. Interesting ethics in Florida, I guess. In fact, one of those, by the way, had a financial transaction take place wherein they evidently received money after they voted last year to fund a particular organization from that organization. So is that a conflict of interest? Is that vote null and void because it was combined with others?
Mr. DeMuth, as you were explained to, in the final vote, there were a number of agencies that were selected to receive funds from the different three categories. The vote of the committee member did not annure specifically to any of those. It was to improve all of them, much like if there was a... So that is not a conflict of interest there. Along the same lines as when we had a commissioner sitting here on the dais who had a brother as a firefighter. Whenever they would vote to approve a contract, obviously a benefit would annure to the brother, but it was also annuring to the benefit of 200 or so other firefighters and union members. So therefore, the conflict does not benefit someone specifically because you're voting on the group.
It's funny. I mean, I read the voting conflicts of interest in the state statute, and I didn't see anything in there wherein you could take the conflict of interest, marry it with other non-conflicts of interest, and call it a non-conflict of interest to vote on it.
That's a misstatement, sir, but continue on, continue.
So in any event, therein, we have a problem. What I would suggest is that we need a major house cleaning on the CSAC committees to eliminate these conflicts of interest. We ought to take a strong look at that and eliminate a number of these folks, because it just, it is not, it does not serve the public well. It's not a way to allocate dollars, public taxpayer dollars. Secondly, I bring up the process of the omnibus RFPs. They lack in objectives, timing, and key performance metrics. They're, how can you put out a RFP for 56 different organizations and expect to get anything of substance targeted towards the sorts of things that are needed by children in this community? You can't. You can't. What we need are specific RFPs written for specific targets with key performance metrics, with objectives, and with timings in there so that we can judge whether these organizations are performing or they are not. Because right now, all we did this year was we put lipstick on last year's pig. We put more money in the trough, and all the nonprofits came in to feed off of that trough, and that's what we're ending up with. A number of issues weren't even addressed, one of which, I'll just, I'll bring up one. One of it, which is the issue through, number one issue throughout all communities in the United States, and that's childcare. Childcare was not addressed. We have 59 organizations in this county that evidently do early childcare from zero to five years old. We have no idea how they're performing. Is their capacity enough for this community? We don't know, because it wasn't investigated. How do we improve what they're doing? No idea. So how are we going to address that? We didn't even touch that one. You know, and there are others, but I'm not going to get into it. I mean, it's just, it's too long. Childhood obesity was one that came up on our radar screen, not addressed. Outplacement programs for graduates, 400 kids a year don't know what they're going to do when they're handed that diploma. We need to provide them with some sort of entity wherein they can go in and get a little hand-holding to get into our complicated economy. And so finally, what I'll do is I'll offer up some Golden Fleece awards for this year. Number one on my list is the Youth Sailing Foundation. Last year, we gave them $40,000. This year, they got, they're going to get $65,000. And in the paperwork that they provided, one was a spreadsheet that showed about 105 kids in there. One of those kids happened to be, have a name that's very familiar in our community and plastered across quite a number of buildings here. I don't know whether that kid is getting our benefit or is not, but on another chart that they provided associated with this program, they stated that 300, or I'm sorry, yeah, 300 kids were getting the benefit, 285, actually, were getting the, it looked like they were getting the benefit. Of those kids, 200 were over 200% of the poverty level. Only 85 were under. So who's getting the benefit? Who's getting the money? Are we, have we created a free sailing program for anybody who wants to come? I don't know. It's impossible to tell based on what they provided, but yet you're going to vote for them to get that $65,000 today. Second one is Crossover Mission. I've had a problem with them for a while. Three years ago, they hired a $125,000 a year fundraiser. Last year, or a year before that or after that, they hired that, a fundraiser for $180,000, and last year, they hired that fundraiser for $180,000. This year, they're only asking $107,000 for that fundraiser, proposing to spend $107,000 for that fundraiser. So if they're capable of raising the kinds of money that can afford over $100,000 a year of a professional fundraiser, why are we funding them? When do we cut this off? You know, last year, we gave them $115,000. $15,000 was supposed to be for academics, and $100,000 was for education. Well, evidently, that didn't sit too well. So this year, what they did was they, they're asking for $130,000 in omnibus, but they split it into two $65,000 allotments, one for education and $65,000 for the basketball program. I mean, does that, something smells funny to me. And finally, the Learning Alliance. I mean, year after year after year, four years in a row, we've been bouncing around 60% of our kids, or I'm sorry, 40% of our kids are not at grade level for English Language Arts. It has improved slightly for math, but nothing has happened for that. And we've spent 100, what, $1.34 million during that period of time, and we've gotten zero results. I would recommend strongly that we put something in next year's requirement for these folks that they need to improve and get us up to 70 or 75% grade level, because right now, they've done nothing. We're stuck in the mud. We're stuck in the mud with these folks, and I just don't see where we're getting any value out of them. So that's my sense of what's going on. That's what I had to sit through, and I did sit through, all of the Grants Committee meetings. And by the way, when it came to the youth sailing organization, I wasn't allowed to ask any questions about the data that they provided, because again, our attorney would not allow a main CSAC voting member and the financial chair to ask questions during that Grant Committee meeting. I was not allowed to do that. So we're blocked from questioning the organizations that are coming to the trough for more and more money. Something's got to change. This is not working. It is a mess, and I am working with a group from the Taxpayers Association and some other groups to put together a revised format for CSAC that hopefully by year's end, we will be able to present to you so that we can get directed, specific RFPs, that we can get a focus on major issues associated with childcare in this community, and that we can get some real progress put on the books versus the same old, same old, same old. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments. Always appreciate it. Anybody else?
I'm Miranda Swanson. I'm the health officer for the county and also the CSAC chair for the last 17 years. I've seen CSAC grow and change over those 17 years, and certainly the progress we have made in the last year is nothing short of substantial. We've had many, many dedicated people over the years serve on CSAC, on our Grant Subcommittee, on our Need Subcommittee, and our Grant Subcommittee this year with the new evaluation rubric and the diversity from all parts of our county, both in race and ethnicity, chaired by Bob Schlitt. It's absolutely amazing what we do and what you fund and the difference that our organizations make. I wanted to thank all of you for your support, for the time you spent on CSAC, to thank Cindy and her staff and all of the members of our Subcommittee, because they have done great work this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning, Commissioner Anthony Brown, also a member of CSAC. It is very troubling to sit here, having been a part of the CSAC Subcommittee, and hear us attacked, belittled, undermined, and all the effort that those people that sit those days. When you have 60 programs, I have two binders about this thick that we have to decipher and try to understand. We have a group of dedicated professional people in that room who care, because you all care and a lot of those monies. During the process this year, I had four deaths in my family within six weeks, but I still was trying to do my part in making this happen. It is appalling that someone who sits on the main committee and is involved with this process will come in and demean those others who are in there doing what they think is right, who are doing what you want us to do to make sure that this money is dedicated to the proper sources. We had to come about with some changes. Changes is not oftentimes accepted, but this year, under Cindy and her group, those changes were beneficial. We accepted them. We worked with them. We used them. And as so many people have said, it's not perfect yet. And as so many people have said, "It's not perfect yet, Mr. Airman," but it's going to get there. As long as you as committee members of the Commission stop and not hear the naysayers. Somebody can find a problem with the Mona Lisa and how it was painted. But does that make them an expert? I applaud those people that I sat in those rooms with, Ken Mark, Karen Too, everybody. It was an awesome experience to see that kind of dedication. And ladies and gentlemen, it is hurtful to sit in this room and hear that kind of work maligned and torn down. Please continue to do what you do and not listen to the naysayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tony, we applaud you and all of the other members of the CSAC. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to make a brief comment that I hope you continue this great program. The children are the most important thing that we have in our whole community. Us adults have not done such a great job in running this world, and we depend on getting our kids educated. And I just saw some statistics. There are more birders out there, and most of them are young kids now, than there are golfers. There, in our country, there's 20 million, 25 million golfers, and some are pretty young. There's one, they quoted as six years old, out still golfing. But there are close to 70 million, 67, 67 million people out there birding. Most of them are kids, and so there's more and more kids getting out. The youth sailing, we've got to get kids out. I don't have anything to do with the youth sailing, but getting kids outdoors is very, very important. The average kid, most of it, is 15 minutes a day, and that's probably waiting for a school bus. Most of them, they're on their computers, I mean, on their phones, and they're inside these days. So we've got to get the kids out. Our program with Audubon, we are concentrating on lower-income folks. We are, we're working with four county Title I schools. They come out, one on Monday, one on Wednesday, Tuesday, one on Wednesday, one on Thursday, for 14 weeks. And then the second semester, we do it the same for 14 weeks with the same school. We've, actually, she said, we've been doing it 10 years. Now, these kids are changing, and they're, it's hard to show how effective we're doing, but we're trying to get information out there that shows that these programs really work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Welcome, Mr. McPartlin.
Good morning, Bob McPartlin, City of Sebastian, also a longtime CSAC member. I didn't want you guys to be left with a bad taste in your mouth. And, you know, sometimes I complain about your support of this program, and I really do want to applaud you, the $3.4 million for children's programs. And I want to correct Commissioner Airman on one thing. Well, he started when LeAnn was one person that ran it. When we started, I started, she was only half of a person that supported the program. And, you know, the community has been for years, you know, coming up and trying to get more support for CSAC to structure. And, you know, from last year when I spoke to this year, it's, as Miranda had said, it's unbelievable. Your hire of Cindy was phenomenal. And then, you know, she had, she's no longer here, is Amy Rutherford. But Megan and Ms. Maya do an unbelievable job. Commissioner Law, when we first started, CSAC meetings were every other month for about, might last 30 minutes. Those were the meetings that kids had to sign off on a government meeting would come to. Now, those CSAC meetings are every, every month for at least two hours, typically going well over two hours, where there's a lot of discussion. Several of you Commissioners, I have spoken about some childish, petulant behavior that happens in the meetings, but you know what? I look forward to it every month. Because I think the CSAC needs to be challenged in certain areas because it only makes us that much stronger. And again, as, you know, I heard about two of the programs there was major things with. One of them, I did go visit. The other one, the youth sailing, I couldn't go visit at the time because Mr. Kent and Mr. Schlitt went on the site visit at the same time. So I am looking forward next year. And as last year I had spoken, if there's any program that you have a problem with, just let me know. I'll go out and I'll see it. And I encourage you to go see these programs that are funded as well. Some, I just, I'm amazed at what happened. And again, this also started with Mike Zito and Beth Powell had a, had a great deal to do with it, get it up and running and hiring the staff. And again, from where we came from last year to this year, I can't even imagine where we'll be in the next year. And I'm also, this past year, we did the first, what was it, we had the lunch Cindy did as far as showing the emphasis of the programs, and all the Commissioners were there. I can't wait till the next one comes up. Golden Impact Awards. And so I look forward to those again. And again, thank you for supporting the programs, and thank you, staff.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we do have a motion by Commissioner Airman with a second, by Commissioner Moss.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Any couple comments?
Of course.
I just want to take a moment, and I'm going to usually say the best for the last, but I'm going to start with them. Cindy, Megan, you know, LeAnn, Maya, Amy was acknowledged. You know, we just adopted a mission statement that talked about exemplifying dedication to Indian River County and then a commitment to service excellence. They exemplify that. And I thank Cindy for her leadership and everybody else in that department and that staff that works so hard to, you know, provide a safety net and to ensure that our most vulnerable are looked after. I think you've done an amazing work this past year from just the improvement in the processes, the, you know, promoting transparency and accountability. You know, Bob mentioned the Golden Impact Awards, but there's also the highlighting of the success stories in terms of the metrics for each agency that's working with us, how you take the time and you work with the agency to improve their organizational capacity. So it goes beyond the fact that you just wait for that application to come in and review. You're also investing in the community, investing in our nonprofits that are going to help those who are, you know, their circumstances may not be ideal, not doing to their own, nothing that they did, but we're there for them. And so I just want to thank you all for that. I want to thank Mike for his leadership, Bill, your legal acumen in this effort. And then I also want to thank the CSAC Committee members. As evidenced, it's not an easy job. You put a lot of time and effort into this, as well as the subcommittees. I mean, you're making an investment in the future of our community and looking out for those, again, who are the most vulnerable, but they are the future. And you all are the ones that are carrying the banner and the flag to ensure that they get the services that they need. And I just can be prouder of our staff. And again, as I sit back and think about how we adopted a mission about being dedicated to Indian River County, and also, you know, by service excellence, I would like to thank the staff and Mike for that, as well as the CSAC Committee as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. All right, Commissioners, if there is nothing further, again, we have a motion by Commissioner Airman with a second, by Commissioner Moss. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to Public Works 8550 Jungle Trail waiver request to floodplain cut and fill balance requirements.
It's just in time for the rain.
Just in time for the rain. How appropriate to be talking about cut and fill. I don't know.
Talking about flooding.
I don't get a lot of opportunities here. Welcome.
Hello.
Did you bring the rain with you?
We talk about flooding, right?
Right?
Kirsten Leindecker, Acting Public Works Director. I'm here today to present a waiver request to the floodplain cut and fill balance requirements on residence 8550 Jungle Trail. And I'm just seeing if we can get the map up. It's AA. You don't have it?
Kim, can you turn up Kirsten's microphone a little bit? You're tall, so the microphone's away.
Did I ask IT to turn up the microphones?
There you go. And the rain's not helping. I don't have that problem because I'm below the microphone.
I'm all bored.
Are we bringing up the pictures so we know what we're talking about? Okay.
So the property owner is Katrin Fischer, and the owner's engineer is Coastal Waterways, and they're requesting a waiver of the cut and fill balance requirement for the 100 and 10-year flood storage requirements in accordance with the County Land Development Regulation Section 930.07. And it's located, its size is 3.67 acres, and it's located on the east side of Jungle Trail, just south of the Captain Forster Hammer Reserve and between Sea Oaks and the Island Club Division to the south. There's also a single-family residence just to the south of it, of a smaller size. So the design for that subject site is proposing 3,750 square foot residence, 2,400 square foot garage, 2,400 square foot workshop, and 2,264 square foot covered deck, and 23,334 square foot of driveways. I don't know if we can see the site plan. All right, this is the site plan, and the buildings are shaded in gray, so and the driveway is to the south. All right, so the site is split between two special flood hazard areas, zones AE6 and 7 with a 100-year base flood elevation of 6 and 7 respectively, and the 10-year base flood elevation is 3 feet. ASI Regulation 930.07 requires that the site will not increase the flood elevation by more than one foot. And the applicant's engineer has provided some documentation and determined that the flood elevation may rise between point 1 to and point 30 feet for the 10 and 100-year base flood. Per our code, cut and fill means that an equal volume of storage capacity must be created for any volume that would be displaced by a fill or structure, except if the Board of Commissioners grant a waiver for the project. The applicant has shown that by means of competent engineering study that the development project as designed will meet all other requirements of the stormwater management and flood protection chapter and will not create an adverse impact on flood protection on other lands. The waivers can be considered for the 100-year flood event only or for 100 and 10-year flood event together. The applicant is requesting a waiver for both storm events to allow to fill. So the 100-year flood event compensation requirement would allow filling 6.59 feet. And the second request of the 10-year flood elevation would be an amount of 2.7 feet of storage. That concludes about 35% of the available 100-year floodplain and 47% of the available 10-year floodplain. For the board to consider some considerations would be hardship, environmental, water quality treatment, neighboring impacts, and potential impacts to the county. For the hardship that could be considered is that the natural ground elevation is between 1 and 3 foot, and that poses a problem for the site to develop the site. Some of the existing ground is at or below seasonal high water table in the elevation of 1.1 foot. So in order to build the property, the site must be raised significantly to meet both flood protection criteria and the gravity subject drain requirements. The ability to provide vision of floodplain storage on this site is minimal. The applicant has provided a hardship example depicting the amount of stormwater area required. So you can see that in Exhibit F, but you have that, I think, in your documents. Alternatively, any other method of avoidance would require the resident to be placed on pilings or a deep stem wall and use the first floor as a garage for flood events because the seasonal high water table elevation. To avoid groundwater seepage and direct building impacts. The residence located to the south, which was constructed in 1994, has this type of construction utilizing the first floor as garage and storage. But the Board of County Commissioner has given a flood waiver to that residence as well back then. In my mental consideration, there's a point 54 acre wetland connected to a larger off-site wetland system as part of the Captain Forster Hammer Preserve. And the design proposes to avoid filling the wetlands. That can be seen here on Exhibit B. Neighboring impact, I think that's the most important. The north side is bounded by the Captain Forster Hammer Preserve refugee, and I don't think it has a lot of impact on that side. And to the south, we have the two-story, single-family home built in 1994 on point 46 acres. There's also a 19.6 acre of an old citrus grove with an old stagnant retention pond which borders along the south property. Another area is the, it's directly on Jungle Trail, which is designated a historic road and falls under Bio Board of County Commissioner's evolution 8936 adopted April 11, 1989. This resolution provides requirements for the 40-foot Jungle Trail right-of-way and the 30-foot management area on both the east and the west side of the trail. The impact to Jungle Trail is the installation of 216-foot driveways to the 30-foot management area. The driveways are proposed to be native dirt matching the look of the trail. The applicant proposes to leave the 30-foot management area in its existing state with contains a few cabbage palms. Additional plantings are not proposed. Any proposed planting of this area will require approval from the planning and zoning commission. Potential impacts to the county, and that might be the biggest section here. The county has adopted a FEMA floodplain guidelines and participates in the community rating system. Our last audit placed us in category five, which enables residents to receive a 25% flood reduction rate on their flood insurance. If we would be declassified into a higher number, that would mean that the percentage of deduction would change from 25 to 20%. We do not know what that impact is currently. The county is undergoing the audit right now, and we don't have the new rating system However, staff recommends, the applicant has provided competent engineering study that the development site as designed will meet all other requirements of the stormwater management and flood protection chapter and based on the applicant's study, they will not create a material adverse impact on flood protection on other lands. In consideration of this, the Board of County Commissioners may, in its discretion, grant the waiver from the provisions of 930.07. The Board of County Commissioners should consider and determine if a waiver should be granted from previous, from the provisions of the Land Development Regulation Section 930.07. To, if granted, staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve the 100-year floodplain waiver and then approve the 10-year floodplain waiver with the year flood plan waiver and then approve the ten year flood plan waiver with the expiration of the waiver to coincide with the type C permits. Type C permits are codified to be granted for six months with an allowance for a six months extension. The waiver should be granted from the date of approval transfer to association approved building permits upon its issuance. The waiver then can be active as long as the building permit remains valid. And that's that.
Thank you. All right. Are there any questions, commissioners, comments, or concerns? Yes, Commissioner Moss.
That's complicated. Just confirming, I think I heard you say it through the rain, not filling in any wetlands with this. And with the point system, could you just be a little more specific in that FEMA point system?
FEMA does an audit every three to five years. The last one was done in twenty, two years ago, no, it's been longer, I think. We are just going through the audit right now, so to a new audit. On the last audit, we have been raised from category six to category five, which is better, the smaller the number, the better it is, the more benefit to the county's residents to have to purchase flood insurance because they get a higher rebate. And there are certain options from FEMA how you can increase your points and increase. And one, this is section 400 and 40, where the county is asked to do restrictions on not on structures and stuff to build flood protected homes and create this additional compensative storage, which we have been providing so far. So, this would be a waiver that would cut some points off of our current state. So, but we don't know exactly right now how much, how many points that would change because we currently in the audit, we did approve two waivers earlier in December 2023. And I think we are only losing the points once. Once you do a waiver, then there's no additional points that you're losing by giving an additional waiver. However, I don't know, the 2023 waivers were in the last audit and this would be maybe in the next audit because it's today and currently the audit is closing, I think, on seven, eight, July 8.
Thank you. Are commissioners, any other questions?
No, that was all in the backup.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yes.
Kristin, they're proposing to, are they going to bring in the 10,600 cubic yards of fill or will that be excavated on site and distributed?
I don't think it's, they have to bring in material, yes. I don't know if it's 10,000 because they're gonna do a dry pond. I'm not sure how much excavation is for that dry pond, do you remember? But they will have to bring in a substantial.
There won't be any excavation really on site, except for maybe some grading because of the high water table. The fill that you probably see there as far as the acre footage will probably be more because the actual fill needs to bring you up above the hundred year storm event. But when it comes to calculations, you just kind of look at the hundred year elevation, whether it's six or seven, 10 years, three. Jungle Trail is, I think, between two and three, but you probably know that better than I do.
And they will be need to use Jungle Trail as a haul road to bring in that fill.
And how much of the three point, whatever, three point six, seven acres will be filled? Will all the 10,000 cubic yards go to the house and the garage and the workshop and the roads or will it be distributed all over the property?
Right now, it's just proposed for the building areas and then I think on one side there's like a garden along the road that goes back towards the workshop.
And the driveway.
So, the wetland, which is like a half acre plus or minus, will not be filled. And then parts on the south side, I think about 25 feet, they have, I think, if you can see it, they show some kind of retaining wall, I think it's a rock wall. So, they're proposing not to fill beyond that towards the neighboring residence to the south.
During the process, did they make any attempt to mitigate the fill that would be necessary or the impervious areas?
Well, they are providing roughly three inches of treatment in the front dry retention area. They did, at first, they were gonna fill part of the wetland. They decided to shift it completely out of the wetland, so they're offering that up. As far as other mitigation, no. It's, you really have, it's kind of a catch 22, you really have a high water table, so you don't get much benefit at all by doing any excavation. You know, on the other hand, you have a neighbor to the south that, you know, do you really want to have a first floor that floods? You know, so it's, you have to balance what you want there. Good question.
And they're gonna use, I mean, there's no other way to access it. Jungle Trail is the haul route.
Yeah.
And that's kind of like halfway on that section of Jungle Trail, that's, don't do it when it's raining.
Yeah, they'll probably have to have flaggers.
Yeah, I mean, it is what it is. There's no other way to get there, so I get it, but.
I guess you could get a navigational permit.
They could, they could float it in on a barge. That might be, that might be more than they want to undertake. All right, commissioners, other questions, comments, or concerns? Anybody from the public? Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Motion approved.
Chairman, this, this property was also, has been nominated on, for ELAP. I don't know if the owners, if Wendy or Beth have contacted the owners yet, whether they're willing to, if they're willing to sell, it doesn't sound like it, but I don't know. But it is, just, just for information, it was a nominated parcel on ELAP.
Wonderful. That is a process that will be ongoing and we'll see how that plays out. But there is a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Lor. There's no further, for approval of the waiver. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. With that, we will move on to utility services, where you're going to announce a public workshop and schedule public hearings for fee and rate modification associated with the Indian River County Department of Utility Services. Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. How are you all?
Fabulous.
Sean Lees, the Utilities Director, I will try to make this short and sweet. I was thinking earlier that all the people in the audience were here for me, but I don't think so. There's anybody left, so.
They totally were waiting for this riveting utilities.
Want to beat the rain.
Just wanted to kind of go through a couple things. So, in 2018, we had had a previous rate study that was performed. There was some adoption of a few things from that rate study, but a lot of what was done in that rate study was actually not adopted. And so, we participated or we partook on a, on a process to initiate a new rate study in November of this year, of 2023 of last year. We got approval to award the RFP to Stan Tech Consulting to conduct the rate study. Soon thereafter, we actually met with them and had a kickoff meeting to kind of discuss the rate study and what would be involved. Around mid-April, mid to late April, they had some preliminary results that they introduced to us. We got a draft report from them towards the end of May. We're still kind of working through that draft report with them right now, working through some details of what that's going to be. We should hopefully have a final report here within the next couple of weeks, a month. So, what we're looking at trying to do is look at schedule a public workshop to introduce the results of the rate study to the public and to receive feedback from them. The plan would be to have that workshop on August 22nd. And then we're also asking to set a public hearing to actually hear the, the rates and to approve those rates during the September 24th commission meeting. So, what we're asking today is to set that workshop for the 22nd and to set a public hearing for September 24th.
All right, commissioners, questions, comments, concerns?
Approved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Lor with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much and have a great Fourth of July.
You too. All right, 12 J2 was pulled from the agenda, so with that, we'll move on to county attorneys' matters. 13A, referendum for amendment to tourist development tax. Are you handling this?
Yes.
Wonderful. You have patiently waited this whole time, so.
Yes, so have you.
Go for it.
I'm Shannon Gordon. I'm the summer legal intern speaking on behalf of the county attorney's office. I will also try and keep this brief. Last summer, the board approved an additional percent increase to the county's tourist development tax. However, the state statute was updated that required the increase to be approved by referendum at a general election. So, the resolution before you today requests that a referendum be placed on the upcoming general election on this matter on November 5th. And the resolution also includes the draft referendum language and the notice requirements, which we have already been working to ensure that the notices be placed on the supervisor of election website, the county website, and local publication. Thank you.
Awesome. Commissioners, questions, comments, and concerns?
No? All right, what is your pleasure?
That's all, motion approved.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Fantastic job on presenting your matter.
Thank you.
Very smooth and efficient.
Council, you took notes?
I think.
I've just.
Now, are you gonna take a stab at the next one? 74th Avenue Property Exchange? No? Okay.
I'll take that.
You're gonna go out on a high note. I like that. All right.
And thank you, Shannon. We really appreciate your work in the office. Before I go on to 74th and give Kim a chance to bring up the little diagram, I'd like to introduce Dylan Waregota. Dylan is another one of our summer intern slash shadowing folks. He's a third-year student at the University of Florida. He decided to come and stay with us for a couple of weeks this summer to see if he wants to go to law school. So, I don't know what kind of impression we're making on him so far. I guess we'll give him a couple of weeks to decide, but we're very pleased to have Dylan in our office as well.
Welcome aboard. We look forward to your commission agenda item in the future.
Very good. Commissioners, the right away between First Street Southwest and Fifth Street Southwest along 74th Avenue is kind of confusing. Back in 1959, there was a dedication of 100 foot of canal right away and you can see how that ended up. When the dedications go from, the dedications for the canals go from the track line and 100 feet from that track line. There was a discrepancy in establishing where that track line actually lies and you can see on the exhibit that you have there that the first 50 feet from the canal is indeed Canal Right-Away. Then there's a 30-foot strip that is owned by the property owner to the west. In this case, it would be Mr. and Mrs. Barone. Then there's a 20-foot kind of vacant strip and then in blue, you can see the other 30 feet of right-away dedication that is kind of sitting in the middle of the Barone's property, not only Mr. Barone, but also the other landowners that are involved in this Oslo Road Agriculture and also Beal Holdings. What we propose to do is an even exchange, that we will go ahead and dedicate to them the 30 feet shown in blue that's demarked there as 74th Avenue, that we will in exchange, we will give that to them and in exchange, we will go ahead and take what is demarked in yellow as far as the property that is owned by Barone. It works out to be an even swap. What we'll do in this case is we'll get everybody to go ahead and sign onto the exchange agreement. We'll do an exchange of quitclaim deeds. They'll be recorded by the county and this situation should be resolved by that exchange and get everything back into its proper place and correct the erroneous dedication that was there. So, the recommendation today is for the board to go ahead and approve the property exchange agreement and approve the accompanying resolution that adopts the property exchange pursuant to chapter 125. If there are any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them. And thank you to Kim for her computer extraordinary experience.
All right, commissioners, any questions, comments, or concerns? Commissioner Ehrman, that was a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Moss. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Is that all in favor?
All of us.
Okay. And how about we go with all opposed? None. All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It wasn't as emphatic, I'm sorry. We're getting tired.
We're still good.
We're running up on lunchtime. All right, with that, we will move on to SWID, Solid Waste Disposal District. First three items, if we could take those together, minutes of the special call meeting of April 24th, minutes of the regular meeting of May 7th, and minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st.
Not a chair, so move.
And I will second that. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the fiscal year 2025 annual adjustment requests by Waste Management, Atlas Organics, and Indian River Sustainability Center. Welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Anshu Metha, Managing Director of the Solid Waste Disposal District. Annually, we come to the board for consumer price index on our various agreements. We have two agreements with Waste Management, one with Atlas Organics and one with Indian River Sustainability Center. And today, I do have Atlas Organics here. They operate our yard waste facility and wanted the opportunity to, for them to introduce themselves. They've been in our county for four-plus years, doing a great job. And as part of this request, I wanted to just have them present a little bit to you. I've, David Berenberg, Jared, and Michelle here, and I think each of you have a copy of the presentation.
Yeah, thank you very much, commissioners, for having us. I'm David Berenberg, Vice President of Compost Operations for Generate Upcycle. We operate in Florida as Atlas Organics. Our mission is organic waste diversion from landfills. That's, that's what we do. We operate nine compost facilities throughout the United States, five of which in the state of Florida and one right here in Indian River County. We are a little over four years into a 10-year partnership with Indian River and in talking with Hamatcha, this was a great opportunity to come and introduce ourselves to you because we've, we've never been up in front or told you what we've done or how we've been part of the community. We divert annually over here 90,000 tons from landfill, saving landfill space, turning that into compost and soil amendment, providing it to companies such as Scotts Soils and we value the partnership over here and we wanted an opportunity to tell you a little bit about us. So, with that, I'll turn it over to my business partner, Jared Bond, and he'll walk through that presentation.
Yeah, good morning, commissioners, and thank you all for having us. So, about five years ago, just to give a little background, Atlas in the county entered into a public-private partnership, 10-year contract. So, we're about to enter the second half of that, that 10-year contract. We're in year five right now. At the beginning of that contract, we invested in some infrastructure improvements at the yard waste tipping area to improve the, the customer experience and most importantly, the safety of the county residents and companies that dispose of their waste there. We're proposing as, as part of this contract modification to continue with that investment in a, in expanding that tip area as the county has, has grown and continues to grow, to similarly grow the yard waste tipping area, allow more space for county residents and businesses to tip their yard waste as, you know, over, over the last five years, the inbound tonnage and volume has, has increased and we anticipate will continue to increase. So, we, I said, and I think that Solid Waste Disposal District see that as a, as a necessary investment to continue the, the operation of that facility in an efficient and safe manner. So, you know, that's, that's how we started and, and, you know, part of what we feel is our value proposition as a company is, is we invest in the communities that we operate in and, you know, and we, we feel that our presence in Indian River County is a testament to that. We do that by literally investing in the infrastructure that we operate as well as the people and the place that we operate at. We take great pride in our safety. We take great pride in our safety record. We have a dedicated safety team within Atlas Organics and Generate Upcycle and have a a great safety record at this site specifically over the last four-plus years. We divert, we've diverted over four hundred thousand tons of organic waste, that's yard waste and food waste from the landfill. And we've also increased the the headcount of this facility by over a hundred percent in the last four years since we first started providing jobs and economic opportunity at wages that we that are on average about twelve percent higher than the market from what we've what we've what we found in the data. We've also just continued to invest in the facility to grow our services and product offering over the years and and we hope to be able to continue to do that into the future. Next slide. Some of the advantages of composting. Composting reduces greenhouse gas emissions, namely methane. A lot of the emissions you may hear of are are carbon dioxide. Methane is a very potent greenhouse gas that is at least twenty-three times more potent than carbon dioxide. And and it, as yard waste and food waste and other organic waste sits in a landfill, it decomposes and emits methane. In a controlled and professionally operated compost facility, emissions are are near near zero. So that helps us to keep keep the air quality in Indian River River County good and and protect residents' health and safety. It also reduces waste and extends the life of your landfill. Landfills are very expensive to build and take a long, long time to to permit. About a third of the waste that goes into a landfill by volume is is organic waste. So we we take that, we recycle it and we put it onto the fields and and lawns and other areas of the county instead of taking up space in the landfill, pushing out that costly investment into, you know, years and years later. And lastly, it's a it's a much lower risk disposal method as composed as compared to a land application of single ground yard waste, which can emit odors and volatile organic carbons, which can be negative to to residents' health. Just a couple of things that we we hope to do in the next six, nine, twelve months. We we are actively working on a project to increase the food waste diversion at at the compost facility that we operate in Indian River County. We've ramped up our our acceptance of food waste over the last couple of years and and hope to make a significant investment at the facility in the near future to enable us to accept more food waste, which will expand the impact and the diversion of of our project in partnership with the county. That investment will be beneficial as well in in our, in that we will be providing additional jobs to to county residents at the facility as part of that project and expansion. Secondly, we're also in the process of opening a a retail area. We've we've worked with the county planning department to get an approval and and that is.
We are approved.
We are approved for that and should be opening that in the near future.
In a week.
Yeah, in a week.
Yeah.
So we're looking forward to that and and believe that that'll provide additional benefit to county residents and and businesses and in in that it'll provide convenience for them to be able to come and pick up landscape materials right after they tip at the landfill as opposed to going to the landfill and having to go go drive another ten, fifteen miles to a landscape supply yard or something like that. So lastly, you know, we we're prepared to invest additional dollars to develop the infrastructure of the counties, similar to what we did at the beginning of the project. You know, we've operated for for going on five years now. And as we've learned about the facility and and expanded our partnership and relationship with Hamachi and 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 the others at the Solid Waste Disposal District, we believe that that investing in this infrastructure is necessary and will extend the the life and the ability to continue to divert organic waste from the landfill at that site. Our proposed amendments, we believe, are are an increased opportunity to add value to the county in relation to alternatives that we believe may 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 or may not be out there. We're a leader in organic waste disposal, like like Dave mentioned, operating five facilities in the state of Florida and and nine nationwide. And our our parent company, Generate Upcycle, operates waste-to-value infrastructure, processing food waste, compost, which is Atlas Organics, as well as wastewater projects across twenty different projects across the country, across the United States, Canada and Europe, so.
And we would welcome any commissioner that wants to come by and tour the site and and see firsthand what we do. We would love to have you out over there and and actually show you the process from start to finish and take you through the flow. One of the one of the most well-run sites we have out of all of our nine locations.
Fantastic. Commissioners, any questions? I have been out there, it's been quite some time, it was right after you guys first opened and it's a pretty cool, I mean, I like composting, so it is pretty cool process that you guys go through. Yeah, the earthy smell, like gardening and whatnot. There's all sorts of stuff that goes into it, it's not just putting stuff in a pile and waiting for it.
It is, it is not.
You gotta turn it and move it and monitor it, it's a whole shebang.
Shebang is a good way of putting it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, again, a great partnership with Atlas and I just wanted to have them an opportunity to to showcase kind of what they're doing, what they're planning to do for for our community. We're we're excited about the continued partnership with Atlas. So getting back to sort of the agenda item, again, these are annual adjustments that are allowed in our contract. Waste Management has requested a two-point-four-seven percent increase. So that would be our current franchise agreement that we have in place now through September thirty, twenty twenty five. This would be the last increase, if you will, for the current agreement. And along with that is the recycling collection agreement that Waste Management currently has. So this would be the last increase for those two agreements until the the new franchise agreement goes into effect on October one, twenty twenty-five. We also have the Indian River Sustainability Center, they've requested a three-point-four-four percent CPI increase and an adjustment for leachate quality, which which staff support. So happy to answer any specific questions you have, but wanted to just bring this to you.
Questions, comments or concerns?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Move approval of the CPI adjustment.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer. I will be happy to second that. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, motion carries. With that, we'll move on to work order number twelve to Kim Lee Horn for various landfill improvement projects. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by myself, all in favor, opposed, motion carries. And then lastly, we have approval of Solid Waste and Recyclables Collection Franchise Agreement between SWID and Waste Management, Inc. of Florida. I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Lor, all in favor, opposed, motion carries. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for a super awesome, exciting meeting. Everybody, please have a very happy and wonderful Fourth of July. And remember to keep all hands and appendages away from any fireworks that you may be setting off, so you come home safe.
Madam Rock, just go to the.
Go to.
Publicly provided.
Correct.
Firework display.
That is always the most responsible thing to do.
Always are the safest.
All right, everyone, have a happy Fourth and we'll see you later.